Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Washington Elementary School District Regular and Executive Session Governing Board Meeting. I call this meeting to order on April 10th, 2025 at 6:15. Ms. Tucker, can you do a roll call?
Yes, thank you. Governing Board members present, Governing Board President, Mr. Kyle Clayton, Governing Board Members, Ms. Jenny Abbott Bayarty, Tamelia Gosa Chapa, and Bill Adams.
Thank you. We'll move on to 1B, a moment of silence and meditation. We'll move on to 1C, the Washington Elementary School District Land Acknowledgement. Ms. Gosa Chapa?
Washington Elementary School District respectfully acknowledges that our diverse community and schools are located on the ancestral lands of the Otham Ho-Hokum, Akima Otham, and Otham Peepoche since time immemorial. Washington Elementary School District is committed to work in partnership with the sovereign Native Nations and Indigenous communities to respect and accept responsibility of stewarding their important heritage and culture with our students and our community.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to Item 1D, the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Stanton?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for the adoption of the April 10th, 2025 Regular and Executive Session Meeting Minutes?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Can I have approval for the March 27th, 2025 Regular Meeting Minutes?
I'll also make a motion.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next, we have current events and acknowledgements, board members. Ms. Gosa Chapa?
Go ahead, Bill.
No, I yield.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I know we're in the midst of testing. That's a touchy word. But we're also near the end of the school year, so that's a nice little celebration, right? I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge that April is Autism Awareness Month. Shout out to us autistic babies, super proud. And I hope that as we are embarking in this moment, that we do know that being autistic, while it has many layers and many different components that go with it, it also is not an unsuperpower, is very much a superpower because we're amazing. And also, there's so many things that our students and our people in the community who are autistic can actually accomplish when those supports are available. And when we make the world more accessible, when we look at people with special needs, it's not about coming in and saving us, it's about making sure that the supports for society are actually accessible so we can be self-sufficient and independent on our own. We are fully capable, and I hope that all of our autistic community members know that we see you, we appreciate you, and you're dope. I also want to take a moment to thank my board members who I've engaged with at the community listening sessions, President Clayton and Jenny, and Bill, you've even had a chance to show up to one. And let me just tell you how amazing Washington Elementary School District students are in advocating for themselves and having beautiful talking points when people try to come and disrupt. And I am so proud that our students know how to use their voice. We had students at our first listening session who came back and had really great feedback. We had some great conversation in our second listening session. And in our third one, we had one person show up, but you know what? That was a really beautiful conversation, too, and we got a lot of really great feedback. And what we did here is we saw the different ways that even though we hadn't, as a board, talked with these individuals, we saw how much of our values were in alignment with what we, as a board, had discussed during our study sessions and what our community would like to see from the district going forward. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who has had a chance to show up. If you haven't had a chance to show up yet, that's okay. We've still got plenty of opportunities for you to come. And we do want to hear from our community. This is our time to really listen to your feedback, students, teachers, staff, people who maybe don't have kids, they're currently in the school system, but they live in our neighborhoods, you know? We want to make sure that you guys are communicating with us what your vision and values are. That way, as a board, we can make sure that we're adhering to that and making sure that we're basing the goals that we're setting forth to make sure our students are able to get what they deserve. And so I just want to take a moment. Thank you, President Clayton, for the presentation you put together. It was really, really well done. Thank you for setting up the different study sessions or listening sessions that we've been having. This is going to be really beautiful work, and I'm so excited for the future listening sessions to hear what other kind of feedback we get from our community and just see where we can close those gaps of opportunity that we currently have. I think that's all I have to say for tonight, so I'll pass it on to someone else.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
I'll pass.
Ms. Abbott, Ms. Peterson?
Thank you, President Clayton. We spent the time together at the NSBA, so we're like first-name basis now. It's not formal anymore. Finally learned my first name. Just kidding. I want to apologize for my tardiness, but you guys, I was at the Moon Valley baseball game, and my son was the two outs, down by one, bases loaded, my son is at bat. I can't leave to get here on time. He grounded out. But I couldn't miss it, so I apologize for that little bit of tardiness. So yes, I had the opportunity this last weekend to attend the National School Board Association Conference with Mr. Adams and President Clayton in Atlanta, that's where we were. And it was just a great opportunity for us to learn about all the different things that are happening all over, to kind of refine our own understanding of our board responsibilities and obligations, and just to really recommit ourselves to our communities. And so I appreciate the opportunity to do that, and I think we'll share some of those learnings with the board. And when I got home Sunday night at about 8:00, I went looking for my daughter, who's in fourth grade, and I was like, where is she? And I looked all over the house, and I couldn't find her. And then I went, and she's in her bed, all asleep, and I was like, why is Caroline asleep? It's so early. My son said, oh, Mom, she said she has state testing tomorrow, so she needed to go to bed early. So she got a good little night's sleep, and she was ready. And I just want to express my appreciation. You know, at my campus, we've been doing state testing the last two weeks. Ours is done, so I'm feeling good. Our kids took the ACT, and their scores are rolling in today. Feeling good about the work we've done, and so I appreciate the work that our teachers are doing to prepare our kids and to keep them focused and to remind them to go to bed early, even if they haven't seen their mom for 72 hours. They have to prioritize that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Abbott-Berry?
Thank you, President Clayton. Just so you know, this is National Library Week, so shout out to all the librarians and the aides and everyone for your hard work in our schools, but also my middle son works over at Choya Library, and so I really appreciate the job that he has there and being able to enjoy his love of books. So appreciate all of you for your hard work with the kids and keeping them engaged and also just offering them all types of opportunities to read and learn. So shout out to you all. And then I was able to go to the Sunny Slope Talent Show. This was right before spring break, and gosh, there's amazing talent out there. There were these, yeah, remember the karate girls? And they like, and I say girls because they must have been first or second grade, and they were breaking wood and bricks, and they were doing it to music. Okay, okay, they were a little older, but they looked so young to me. So that was really fun. I love how they, at Sunny Slope, they put on a great event for the community as well. And then, as Ms. Gosa Chapa said, we did do the event at Palaverdy on Monday night. And then also, Mr. Clayton and I and the other board members were there at Choya last week. I think it's a bit of a blur, but I think that's what it was. So looking forward to other community events where we can talk about the student outcomes-focused governance, where it helps the governing board be focused on student outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you, board members. I, too, last weekend had the opportunity to attend the National School Board Association's Annual Conference in Atlanta, Georgia. And it was an inspirational and educational time. The keynote speakers provided a ton of inspiration and also some perspective. The classes I took focused on board leadership, supporting the whole child, and evaluating resource, that resources in the district are distributed, evaluating how resources are distributed around the district. But my favorite class was about the board and superintendent being transformational leaders and how that can create the conditions for success to help our students achieve academically. I will also say it was a great time to spend with my fellow board members that also attended, Ms. Peterson and Mr. Adams, along with just getting to know board members across the nation. I met some from Clark County and from east coast to west coast. So I just wanted to thank the board for allowing me to attend that event. Dr. Stanton?
Excuse me.
Mr. Adams?
I waited all this time. There's a reason that I waited, so I apologize. President Clayton put out a report on this trip that was phenomenal, so I just want to thank you for doing it. Very detailed. All the years that I've gone to this, and I've done many reports myself, this one was phenomenal. It really was very detailed, so I want to thank you for that. I also echo everything that you said in regards to the fellowship and the ability to, for the three of us to get to know each other a little bit more and to meet other board members from around the country, hear what's going on in their world, there are challenges that are going on, which are very similar to ours. And I had an opportunity to talk to a number of superintendents, and there are some creative things that are going on out there, which, one of them was, there is a superintendent that the medium house, the value of their house was $900,000, and it's a large district. And so their tax base is through the roof. So they have the ability to, his desire is to cut the ties to the state and to the government because he's got so much money coming in, and it'd be a great position to be in. Unfortunately, we're not there, and we do need help. But a lot of our brothers and sisters that are board members, we're all going through the same things. You all see what's in the news, so it was just good to be with other individuals that are going through the same thing. And it was wonderful to spend time with my fellow board members, and hopefully, next year, the board will be able to go together as a whole. So I thank the board also for allowing me to go. Also got a chance to attend the Choya meeting, the SOFG meeting, and, you know, I echo Tamelia in regards to the student, the two students that were there were phenomenal. And there were three, and they were so articulate. I mean, I could learn, in fact, I did. I learned from them, that's how good they were. I also want to compliment the presentation and the fact that we're doing something different. We're trying to engage the community. It's been a long time, I believe, since we've ever done anything like that. So the fact that this board has the courage to go out there and try to get the community involved, kudos to you all for doing that. So thank you for allowing me to participate and to witness it. I also want to mention that it is also, there's a lot, this month has a lot of, recognizes a lot of different groups. It is also the month of the military child. And here in Arizona, in the greater Phoenix area, there are 20,000 children that come from military families that are being de-roasting, being transferred in, there's retirees. So we want to welcome them and help them in any way that we can, and we have some in our own backyard, too. So President Clayton, thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to Item 1H, public participation. Oh, sorry, Dr. Stanton, I'm disorganized today.
All right. Mr. President, members of the board, members of the audience, it is a busy time. Yes, it is testing, and I do want to say thank you to the families, to our teachers, to our schools. This is one of the things we have to do, and so thank you so much, whether it's your child getting plenty of rest, or just thank you for working with them all year, because the kids do their best this time of year. It's part of what we do. I do want to thank also Mountain View, Sunny Slope, Desert View, Jeff T., Pam Horton, Danny. We had a Sunny Slope Fest, and it was very well-attended. Our students performed multiple things on the stage, and then Jeff wanted to recognize our district, so I brought one of these back just to say thank you, because we really do partner with our groups, and we work with them on many things together in our communities. And our principals and people show up at their meetings, and we connect with them. And so it's just a great, great opportunity there. I do want to thank, we had eight schools participate in the ADE title cycle, excuse me, Cycle Three Monitoring, and so our eight schools worked with ADE on that. That was something that you had to do a little bit quickly, and so we want to thank them, the ones that had to participate, because when you have to do a cycle monitoring, you have to put artifacts together and things like that. So again, one of the things that we do. Yeah?
Just in case there's somebody who's not familiar with what the acronym ADE stands for, could you?
Yeah, sure. Sorry, I should have done that. Arizona Department of Education, absolutely. Then, we share with the board, our teams continue to focus on chronic absenteeism, and I want to thank Rich Perry and the whole committee. It's fourth quarter, so we do see some kids that are chronically absent, so we're working with those individuals. You know, you work all year, first quarter goes, you know, chronic absenteeism is not there yet, and then you get into second and third, but the fourth quarter is where that's at. And so I do want to thank Lynn for pointing out, Letitia and Nate, who work in safety and mentoring, they work with the schools on trying to get bring down chronic absenteeism. Again, something that we're working on, and we've been recognized as a district for the work we're doing across the state. So again, we really want to take care of our kids, but if others can learn from and with us, we appreciate it, too. Want to thank Danny for recognizing Lydia over in the registration center. If you haven't been over there in a while, you might want to get over there. There actually, I think you're going to see some real efficiencies in customer service going on there. One thing, Mr. Adams, we were at Westmark Education and Workforce Development Committee meeting, where we talk about, a lot of it's about high school, but also some middle school opportunities, I think, coming up, so I keep our ear to the ground there, and we appreciate it as well. And then, we did send out our attendance recognition to our WSD students. We do that. Again, thank you for many of the board's ideas for kind of that, yeah, most improved. And so I share with the board some of the things that parents said. I do want to read just one. Hey, thank you so much for the wonderful news and the recognition for their student, I'll leave the name out, and improve the attendance. We truly appreciate the school's effort to prioritize this and the positive impact it has on students. We're really proud of our students' progress, and we'll continue to support her in maintaining that excellent attendance. Your dedication to the students of the WSD is truly commendable. Thank you for your hard work and for sharing this positive update, and I think we shared that with the committee, too. So again, it takes a village, and so we just wanted to recognize those folks as well. I also was able to go to the ELL Celebration and Parent Engagement Event that Jessica put on. Want to thank all the administration and teachers that were there as well, and especially the families that were able to attend, and we appreciate them greatly. And then, Dr. Bailey did put a nice analysis. It takes a whole village to do double ASA testing, and so kudos to all the people that are doing that. Again, thank you to the staff so much for what you do. We know it's one of the things we have to do, but thank you so much for getting the kids prepared all year long and after. Thank you.
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, Danny, did you get recognized at ASBO for an award or anything?
We were a sponsor for a vendor that got recognized.
We were co-with a vendor that got recognized for our asset planning, our building maintenance software.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. We'll move to Item 1H, public participation. Ms. Tucker?
Yes, we have public participation, I think, a total of four. So can we read the admonition?
No. The governing board welcomes the responsibly presented viewpoints of our students, parents, community, and staff. Our intent is to maintain a professional atmosphere that promotes public participation and the conduct of business in an orderly, efficient manner. Speakers are allotted a maximum speaking time of three minutes. If interpretation services are required, speakers are allotted a maximum speaking time of six minutes, including interpretation. Depending upon the quantity of speakers and the length of the agenda, the board president, it is the prerogative of the board president to reduce this time limit. The board, through the superintendent, has established procedures for responding to questions and complaints. Board policy also allows any grievances regarding district operations or staff members to be submitted in writing to the superintendent. Upon conclusion of the open call to the public, individual members of the board may respond to any criticism made by an individual who has addressed the board, or ask staff to review a matter, or ask that a matter be put on a future agenda.
Thank you. When I call your name, please step to the podium, and the timer will start when you're ready. I do want to preference this first speaker by letting the public know that Mr. Jonathan Ramsey is here with three other colleagues, and the three colleagues would like to give up their time on the subject. So our board president has agreed to give him an extra minute to speak, since he's speaking on behalf of four individuals who are present in the room. Sorry, Jonathan Ramsey from Maryland Elementary would like to address the board regarding the 25-26 personnel cuts.
Dear board members, my name is Jonathan Ramsey, a fifth-grade teacher at Maryland Elementary, and I'm writing to urgently oppose the proposed staff cuts for the 2025-26 school year. Maryland Elementary serves over 600 students, including more than 85 students with IEPs and 140 English-language learners, populations that require specialized support to meet state and federal mandates. Eliminating the assistant principal role, two middle school teachers, one elementary teacher, .5 special education, .5 special area staff, and one office position will jeopardize both student outcomes and operational stability of our school. As a K-8 campus, Maryland relies on strong administrative leadership to manage complex responsibilities. Our current administrative team oversees 80 staff members, 30-plus annual events and athletics, and more than 500 disciplinary referrals each year, give or take. They also ensure compliance with 85-plus IEP or 504 meetings, which are legally required to occur within strict timelines. Research from the National Association of Elementary School Principals underscores that schools with over 500 students require at least two administrators to function effectively, removing one leader from a school of 600-plus students, particularly one serving high-needs populations, risks delays in critical services, erosion of safety protocols, and noncompliance with federal special education law. The proposed reductions are equally alarming. Cutting three teaching positions will increase middle and elementary class sizes. Period. Similarly, reducing special education staff by .5 means 100-plus students with IEPs will lose daily inclusion support directly conflicting with their legally mandated academic plans. Special area teachers are also vital. 90% of Maryland's families qualify for Title I funding, which requires schools to provide a well-rounded education. Cutting these programs disregards both equity and federal guidelines. Finally, eliminating an office staff position will destabilize our front office, which handles hundreds of daily attendance calls, staff questions, parent communications, and will not remove or disappear this burden, but exacerbate it by dividing it between less people. Office staff are an integral part of any successful and functional school. Andrew Maroney and the targeted staff are not just employees, but are pillars of Maryland's success. Her termination paired with these cuts will fracture a culture built on equity, safety, and academic rigor. I urge you to reconsider this decision, which risks harming vulnerable students and overwhelming the staff who remain, I'm sorry, lost myself, attach our signatures from more than 60-plus Maryland faculty members who share these concerns, and for the sake of our students, our community, and this district's integrity, please do not move forward with these reductions. We'd also like to have the following questions answered before the school year's end, if possible, not if possible, please answer them. I want to note that I ask these questions on behalf of any other school in this district that may be facing similar cuts. The primary one for Maryland, sorry, for the pops. According to other schools, similar cuts are not being made across the district despite they're sharing similar enrollment data. Can the school board provide rationale for the seemingly inequitable personnel cuts? Next question, can the district provide a side-by-side reconciliation of expected personnel savings against the overall budget, particularly showing how non-personnel expenses are being adjusted? Two, what saving metrics are, or three, sorry, what savings metrics and evaluation criteria were used to determine that these cuts would achieve the anticipated overall budget reductions? Couple more questions. Thank you. How are non-personnel budgets, areas, supplies, purchase services, software subscriptions, capital outlay evaluated in light of staffing reductions? What is the justification for maintaining or increasing spending in these areas, and are these expenditures tied to initiatives that directly benefit student learning outcomes? What process was used to decide which roles were cut versus which areas received increased funding? And this is a big one, how does the district justify the discrepancy between reductions and FTEs or full-time equivalencies and stable or increased allocations in instructional salary lines? Thank you.
Thank you. If your speech is written, would you mind submitting it for the record and for our reference? And Dr. Stanton, will you please, someone from your staff, please provide answers to those questions?
So our next individual who would like to speak to the board is Ms. Erica Laverty. She is from the Cactus Run community, and she would like to address the board regarding special education department out of compliance.
Good evening, members of the board. I am here as a mother of a fifth-grade student with Down Center at Cactus Run Elementary. At your last meeting, I urged you to audit the special education department due to what I believe is gross negligence. Tonight, I want to explain why. My experience as a parent navigating this district's special education system has been frustrating and disheartening. The IEP team has denied my daughter a free and appropriate public education on multiple occasions. Services and goals that she desperately needs have been removed from her IEP without my consent or agreement. I have attempted to address these concerns with the director of special education, district representatives, and school principal, only to be dismissed at every turn. The director of special education has yet to return my call. I have had to fight for every single service my daughter receives, hiring a family advocate to prevent continued stripping of critical supports for her IEP. Most recently, I was informed that my daughter will be forced to skip an entire grade level of instruction simply because of her age. There is no state statute, district policy, or educational rationale for this decision, only a vague statement that the transition was requested by the assistant superintendent who believes having a 16-year-old in middle school is quote-unquote "rough." What does that mean? I don't know. What I do know is federal law. I know my rights, and I will not hesitate to pursue dispute resolution through the State Department of Education if this district continues to deny my daughter's right to fate. More important and more concerning is, are the families in this district who do not have the knowledge, resources, or ability to advocate the way that I can. How many other children are being denied the education they deserve simply because their parents do not know how to fight back? You have been on notice since March 27th. I would like to believe you- I would like to believe you've learned from your neighboring school district what happens when the school board ignores facts, when things are brought to the attention and they do nothing. Board member Adams, I voted for you. Board member Bariarty, I voted for you. You stand for equitable education. I'm here to tell you there are inequities in this school district. Board member Gosa Chapa, you were so happy explaining how people with disabilities need support. I'm telling you, my daughter is with disabilities and they're taking away her supports. I'm urging again that the board do something, take action. Start with the special ed audit. Ask questions. I'm not the only one with a student in this district with an IEP who's suffering. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker that would like to address the board is Erica Gonzalez. She would like to talk about staff lunches, master scheduling, and she's from the Palo Verde Middle, she's from Palo Verde Middle School.
Good evening, President Clayton and governing board members. I am winging it today, so please be patient with me. I was here to support some of the staff members that wanted to speak to you guys about some concerns they had, but unfortunately, they weren't able to make it, so I am here advocating. I want to start that I am a seventh, eighth grade special education teacher at Palo Verde Middle School and I absolutely love the staff there and I am here to advocate for them and our diverse learners. I also want you guys to know that Palo Verde is your guys' largest middle school in this district. I'm sure you know that. We also have the most programs compared to the rest of the middle schools. We have our CCB program, our CCF program, our, I believe, resource program, as well as our ELL learners who are currently introduced into the district. So with that being said, a majority of our population are diverse learners. I myself am a proud parent of a child with autism who is going to be turning 20 years old this year and I understand the diverse needs and I want to thank you guys for understanding the diverse needs of our students. But I am also here to advocate for our staff members. Because we have a diverse campus, our staff members constantly are trying to bend over backwards to meet these needs. Unfortunately, the 70 minutes that we are being required to have are not necessarily the best interest of each campus. Not every campus is the same and not every campus runs the same. Because of the diverse needs on our campus, some of our students require more interventions. That being said, unfortunately, our teachers are not receiving their 30-minute lunches because we are required to monitor our students, walk them across campus. Please let me explain that our campus has four different rotations of lunches unlike the other campuses that have simply two. Because of this, we were able to administer a survey to our staff members that we are more than willing to share on how this is negatively impacting them and why they are not receiving their 30-minute lunches. We do have 30 minutes built into our schedule. However, students need to transition, often across campus, often being walked to the cafeteria. So this is not only impacting our teachers getting their 30-minute lunches, it's impacting our students receiving their full lunches. So my whole thing is, since we talked about consistency across campuses, I am fully on board with what you guys are trying to do. It is great to have consistency in everything for our students. However, I ask that you please be flexible with our campus's diverse needs when it comes to maybe falling short of those 70 minutes with the master schedules. Some of us might not be able to meet 70 minutes, they might be 67, because we have to transition differently or we have more transitions or we have diverse learners. Our campus has more than 20 different languages. We have about 120 students with special needs who constantly have to travel across campus and they cannot do it in two minutes that we are being provided. Please know that I appreciate what you guys do as well as please take into consideration that our teachers need some respite and reprieve.
Thank you.
I'm here for them. Thank you, guys.
The last speaker that would like to address the board is Ms. Stephanie Anderson from Palo Verde Middle School regarding behaviors and staffing.
Hello, governing board, Mr. President Clayton and governing board members. I'm sorry, I'm really bad at public speaking and I'm really nervous. So I am coming to talk about, we had some other staff that were just going to talk, they're not here, so I'm filling in, about our student behaviors. We've had a lot of issues and I've talked to other campuses. I am a special education teacher at Palo Verde along with the site coordinator for the after-school program. We've had a lot of behaviors on our campus and they're, we're getting told a lot of their hands are being tied. Behaviors are not being addressed, they're getting a talking to and the behaviors continue. We have staff members that are being threatened by students and they don't feel safe. And that's not okay as a teacher. Sorry, really bad at this. And we have teachers that are not returning because we've brought these concerns to our admin and our admin hasn't done anything. We bring a lot of stuff to our admin and things are not being followed through. We have contract employees who I know as a district you spend a lot of money for and they're not following the expectations like the rest of us teachers. They are not following the handbook, the mission statement, what is put in place by the governing board, our district, and our admin. And these students have these behaviors because there isn't a consistency when it comes to some of these contract employees. Our, it's disheartening. It truly is when I have coworkers who are fantastic, wonderful people and they don't feel safe to come to work and they don't want to return to the district because of not following through, they're getting told by district that hands are being tied and voices aren't being heard when it comes to our students' behaviors. A lot of us do a lot of good work with our students. We build really good relationships and behaviors continue because we can't, like, they're not getting their consequences. And I know consequences range and we're totally willing to work with that, but when they're just given a talking to and sent back to class after they curse out a teacher or they threaten a teacher, it's not okay. You're losing good employees for things that we're getting told that district says we can't do. And it hurts and it sucks. Sorry, once again, not really good at this. And we have contracted employees that are not following through with what the rest of us are trying to follow through with. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Stanton, can you reach out and learn more about that? Thank you. Mr. Adams?
Thank you. I know that we're not allowed to respond to this. Are we, forgive me, it's been a while, so I'm just trying to find my footing. Are we allowed to see responses to these individuals as board members?
Yes, as long as it is something that would not come to the board in the future and just talk to me after and we'll make sure that you get the individual that you would like answers to is, I'll make sure we get a response.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll meet, we'll go to item 1I, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Do members have any items they'd like to poll?
Yes, I'd like to poll Consent Agenda Item F.
Okay. Can I have an approval of the Consent Agenda Items A through E?
I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A through E.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Ms. Gosa Chapa, Item F.
So I wanted to go ahead and poll this because we actually do have someone in the audience from Xerapath and I think it would be a really beautiful moment to highlight this resource that's now going to be made available. Oh, sorry. My bad. I did that wrong, guys. I would like to make a motion to approve the polling of Consent Agenda Item F. Did I do that right? Oh, motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. My bad.
Now discussion, yeah.
Did that person want to come up and speak or?
This resource is now going to be made available within our district, so yeah.
Hi. You guys should have a brochure that was handed out to you about our services. We are a community mental health agency. We are now partnering with schools for in-school behavioral health services, so we provide life skills and counseling. Students can also receive community-based services from us as well, so that way they can have wraparound services. We do family support, life skills, counseling, and also respite, so it provides that therapeutic break for guardians on the weekends and during breaks. So hopefully the kiddos are more busy, their hands aren't so stagnant and getting into trouble. They come have fun with us in the community. I don't know how much time I have. I've never done this before.
Three minutes or less?
Okay, wonderful. So we're currently partnered with multiple districts in the state. Isaac, Roosevelt, Pentergass, we're talking right now to Tolleson, Glendale Union High School. So we are, we've been in services for over 20 years. We're very well-versed in behavioral health. We're very excited that schools are now opening up service delivery to in-school services because the kiddos are in services a lot of times after school, but then they have this large chunk of time where oftentimes behaviors are very intense. I come from a family of teachers and I can't tell you how many times I've listened to my sister, my mom, my grandma, my aunt talk about their hands are really tied with behaviors in the classroom because they're trying to navigate 30, 35 students and there's usually a handful of kiddos that need a lot more care. So our staff members can come on site and they'll be assigned to that school's full-time. So depending on the number of students referred to us, we will staff accordingly and they will be available throughout the day to serve the students that are referred to us. Yeah, is there any, am I open to questions? Is there any?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, Ms. Dr. Bailey?
President Clayton, members of the board, I really, really appreciate Xerapath really being involved in our school district. Like Touchstone, which has been involved in our school district for some time, this will make a difference for a number of our students and families. We're actually projecting three schools right to begin with for the next six to seven weeks and then probably enlarging that next year. So really appreciate, they were very, very responsive. I appreciate business services putting through the MOU in a very quick and efficient manner. So we're really looking forward and hopefully we'll be able to get back to the board and give you even more information as we continue. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
Yes, nonprofit organization? Are you a nonprofit?
Are you a nonprofit? No, we're not a nonprofit.
So what is the cost of this?
As well, so.
We are 100% access-funded, so it's zero cost to the district. We will furnish the area, all the supplies, the staff, everything. So as long as they have access, it's 100% free to the district and we can support families in getting on access if they're eligible and checking their eligibility as well.
Okay, since we're asking questions, I have one. How would families within those schools have the education to know to access your services?
So we really partner with the school depending on we go to, some of the schools have like parent café nights. We have resources. We can have people on-site during orientation or first day of school. We really are very flexible. We're not a large company, so we can be very flexible and accommodating to how each school wants us to operate. Some schools really like them, like to be hands-on and others are like, hey, we're really tapped out on resources. We'd like you guys to handle all the phone calls to guardians and introducing your services, which we're happy to do. We partner with counselors, principals, vice principals, sometimes lead teachers, whatever the school has designated as their best resource. We're linked with them and we have a great team. So yeah.
May I finish my question?
I'm sorry for interrupting. Go ahead.
Thank you. So you have counselors on staff? Is that what you do?
Yes, so we have counselors and we have life skills facilitators. Typically, life skills is what's usually utilized to try to help with those de-escalation behaviors to get the kiddos to be more successful in the classroom. If it's more like they're needing trauma processing, we would probably refer them to our counseling team. I am a clinician myself and so we don't want to traumatize or trigger a student and then send them back to class. So typically, we work on a lot of de-escalation techniques, anger management, patience, different character qualities, so that way they know like this is, you know, this is appropriate behavior at a school and this is the place to do processing somewhere else. And so we do a lot of de-escalation and behavior management.
Last question, please. How do you identify the students?
So we typically don't. We would ask the schools, most of the time we meet with the school and they can give us 20 names right off. Typically that, and then usually after we've in-took those 20 students, we're like, hey, let's talk about those really quiet students. Let's talk about those ones that maybe aren't having explosive behaviors, but they're at risk. Because a lot of times the quiet students, a lot of times are the more troubled ones. You know, the big loud disruptive ones, a lot of times aren't communicating what they're going through and the quiet ones are struggling a little bit more. And so as long as, most of the time, parents will outreach us, they'll learn about us and they're really excited for respite because they don't know that they have eligibility for respite. We do have nine homes, so they can come spend the weekends with us, hang out with other peers, have great staff, do things in the community. They love that. So typically, we partner and then we have a shared spreadsheet with every school and so they add students on there and then we outreach the family to introduce our services and see if they're interested.
Thank you. Dr. Bailey?
President Clayton, members of the board, this, we're working this program through our social services. So Amanda Quine has been very, very director of social services. And so it's, our first reaches to our social workers who know students and families that would be mainly successful in this type of, and benefit from the program.
Sorry. Thank you.
And I'll just add, one of the things that's a huge benefit too is we don't stop during school breaks. So during summer, fall, Christmas, spring, we just serve them in the community. So there's not this two-month gap of support and they come back to the beginning of the school year and a lot of times have regressed to previous behaviors. We continue working with them throughout the summer, so that way they feel supported, they know their staff, and they have a constant within the school that they're not having to learn a new person, a new, you know, everyone new and that brings a lot of anxiety. So that's one of the benefits of behavioral health services as well.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next, we'll move to item 3A, An Update on the Washington Elementary School District Policy Transition. Ms. Tucker?
Thank you, President Clayton. I wanted to provide the board and the public and staff an update. If you recall, last June and I think into July, we had public discussions about our policy and currently this district has maintained their policies through Policy Bridge, which is a software-based platform that is ran by the Arizona School Boards Association. Last June, this board voted to transition to the Trust Model Policy Program, beginning July 1, 2025. So we're approaching that date and I just wanted to update the board on what's been happening behind the scenes because with a policy transition, staff, district leadership have been looking at their policies that are under their departments and are comparing them to the corresponding policy of the trust. Therefore, so we can bring to recommendation because most of the policies are copyrighted, meaning they're based on law. But there may be some policies that we, some of the wording, not the exact language, because the current might be copyrighted, but some of the language and some of the procedures that we do at Washington will be transferred over and that would have to be a first read and a second read. Now, that's a heavy lift because we have several policies right now, several hundred policies right now that will decrease because one thing I've noticed in this process, like we could have one policy, we could have five policies that are all being addressed in one of the trust policies. So it could be like a five-to-one kind of transition. So, but because one of your primary responsibilities are reviewing and approving policy, we were looking at what we could do to assist the board in this role and meet the deadline that we have to have things approved by the board, the whole policy manual, the trust one, by June, so that they have time to transition. And so we are compliant, meaning there's no break in service where our policies are available publicly to our staff and our families. So just an update to say we're on track. There are some options depending on how involved this board would like to be in the first reading and the reviewing of the policies. We could, you know, do a study session to kind of come in here. We could do a study session to kind of come in here and all day with the big binder and go through policy by policy, and then that would be the first read and then bring it back for a vote. Or, we could just have them on a regular meeting as a first read. We don't have time to piecemeal it out. I know, Mr. Adams, you might remember that. Back in 2017, we went through a policy review where it took us a year and a half, but every meeting, we had like five to 10 policies that we were reviewing and discussing for a year and a half. We don't have that kind of time, but as you are all aware, there is a component within SOFG where that you guys are going to...forgive my terminology, what is the word that they...
It's called a policy diet.
So, this isn't the one opportunity that you will have to look at a particular individual policy or several policies and have discussions. Right now, the goal is just to migrate our policies to the new platform, and then we'll be going through the policy digest, or at any time, any board member can request a policy review of a particular policy. So, this isn't your one and only opportunity.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So, just so I can make sure I'm understanding this right, the goal is to make sure we get all of our policies migrated to the Trust, correct?
That is correct, Ms. Gosa-Chapa.
Okay, are we discussing now?
Yeah.
So, I just want to make a suggestion. There's already a component of SOFG for us to do a policy diet for the sake of time, for the sake of the capacity of our staff. I think for the sake of the fact that it's the end of the school year, I think it would just be best if we just migrate them, let it go, and then as we embark on that moment in SOFG where we're going to start looking at the policies to like make sure that we're in alignment with what our goals are, we still have to approve our goals after our community listening sessions. To me, it doesn't make sense for us to, at the end of the school year, try to cram this all in. It would make more sense for me, for us to just push them through, and as once it gets approved and gets over to the Trust, then we can start to break through as we go along. But if we already have to do a component of policy dieting, it doesn't make sense capacity-wise to do it right now, in my opinion.
Mr. Adams?
Am I correct in the assumption that through the years, the board has made changes to the policies? We've added on or subtracted, or we changed language?
Absolutely. Number one is laws change. Working with Arizona School Boards Association, we get a policy alert. Sometimes, we get the big one at the end of the sessions. You need to update these policies because these laws either are new laws or changes in laws, or there could be something that happens. It may not be based on law, it could be best practice. So, yes, we currently all...and we will be doing the same thing under the Trust. They have that same, where they will alert us when there needs to be a look at a particular policy.
So, where I'm going with this is if it's as simple as just doing a migration, all we have to do is approve the migration without having to review all the policies.
What is recommended? That is true. Because we are...because one of your primary responsibilities is approving policy, and obviously, the policy perbatim isn't moving over because it is copyrighted by ASBA, Arizona School Boards Association. So, even though it says, it may say similar thing because it's in law, it's going to be worded differently. So, I would recommend, if I may, that we allow this district to continue to look at the policies that govern their work or govern our students or our staff, and then we present it the full manual as a first read at an upcoming meeting, probably first meeting in May, and then the second read for approval to migrate over. The one exception I would like to bring up is section...I'm going to refer to what it's called now, which is Section B in ASBA. That's going to translate to a different name, but there's going to be a board governing section, which is what governs your work and how you operate, things like how you do travel, how you get future agenda items on. So, those are things that you may want to look at specifically, or again, accept the as-is with some wordsmithing changes because certain things are copyrighted, and then you look at those individually after we've migrated over.
My last...so, is there a way to just do a comparison? This is what it was, this is...
That's exactly what we currently have, and we've been working with.
Not just...you can do it for all policies, including the board policies?
Absolutely. I could share the B-section board governance and what it's related to, to the board, and then you...I mean, you can see that when you make the recommendation to approve. You will definitely see the transition. We can show that to you.
Well, it's not just...yeah, but we're doing all policies, not just board policies.
Oh, we're doing all policies, yes.
If you were to give us...I can just envision what this thing looks like. Huge documents of changes, side by side, and we all take the time to review it, then you can have a first read on all of it.
That is what is going to be, meaning it's taking this...we're still not finished, meaning the staff going through it, and we've been doing this all year. It started July, pretty much. So, but absolutely, that is an option.
Just keep it as simple as possible.
I appreciate that.
I mean, I don't know any other way to put it, but you know, without...you know, we've got to approve all of them, not just ours. So, if you're doing...I hope you're not asking us to review just our section.
No, well, you're going to review them all. You're going to have the ability to review them all. So, what I'm hearing is that we will present the full policy manual that will be transitioned to the Trust as a first read, probably first meeting in May, with the second approval, the second meeting.
I thought we had...I was under the impression that we needed to have the second read done by the mid-May.
I'll double-check that dates, thank you. I know that they need four weeks, so I didn't want to push it to the edge so that we would have any downtime. So, yeah, let me check with the dates, but this will occur in May, but we currently have two meetings, and my goal is not to add another. So, I will try to...I'll work with the Trust to see if we can make all of this work around our existing regular meetings.
Right. And if it...the other option was to have a May 3 study session where the first hour or so is to go over the B policy. The second half would be a 60,000-foot viewpoint, kind of seeing the crosswalks of the changes, and that being the first read, and the first meeting in May being the second read. So, that's also another option.
That is definitely an option.
And I just want to thank all the admin and staff for all the hard work the past year going through these policies. We really appreciate it. Any other board members?
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to item 3B, Student Outcomes Focus Governance. I just wanted to give a quick update. As you've heard, we've had three listening sessions at Choya, Desert foothills, and Palaverty. We have four more coming up at Mountain Sky, Royal Palm, Mountain View, and Orangewood. For those watching, please look out for those dates and join us. All are welcome, and we want to hear from you. So far, 327 people have filled out our survey in English and Spanish, and I just want to thank all the staff and community that have participated and provided great feedback and conversation. So, thank you. And do any board members have anything to add or any comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to item 4A, any requests for future reports or agenda items. Board members? All right, hearing none. May I have a motion to move to executive session? Ms. Tucker?
I would just like to update the board. The executive session is for legal advice, and our district legal is running a little late coming from another board giving legal advice. So, we have two options. We can recess now and go to executive session knowing we're waiting for her, or we can just take a recess, come back, and then vote to go into executive session.
Can I move to make a...for us to take a recess?
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we are recessed until executive session. Thank you.
Thank you. We're back from recess. Can I have a motion to move to executive session?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We'll move to executive session.
We're back from executive session. Can I have a motion to reconvene the regular meeting?
I'll make a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we move on to 8A, the delegation of authority to execute requests for assurances by ADE.
I move that we delegate authority to the superintendent to execute the requests for certification and assurances issued by the Arizona Department of Education pertaining to compliance with requirements of Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, and the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment in order to preserve eligibility for federal grant funding.
A second. Any discussion?
Can we do a roll call vote?
Ms. Tucker, can I have a roll call vote?
Yes. Do you care where I start? Mr. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tamelia Gold-- I'm sorry, I'm going that way. Ms. Ginny Abbott-Berdy?
Aye.
Mr. Kyle Clayton?
Aye.
Ms. Lindsay Peterson?
Aye.
Ms. Tamelia Gosa-Chala? The motion passes 5-1? I'm sorry, 4-1. I can't count. I apologize. The motion passes 4-1.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?